First thing I'm going to ask please is if you wouldn't mind silencing yourself folks. That would be awesome. Thank you for your attention. So, here we are, and thank you, to all of you. Most assuredly, thank you to the candidates for joining us this evening. These are always stressful events, but they all look so prepared and I think that we will all be fascinated, fascinated by what we have to say. I am Fran Mello, and I was the person that sort of got the ball rolling, but there are a number of people who have made this happen, and I need to thank every single one of them. Bill Wilmsen is the principal for Hesley, and he has been most gracious in helping. Greg Setterson is our host in the auditorium, and he has been very helpful, and he in fact is back in the sound booth. We have a huge thank you to go to one, Mr. Tim Frankie, and Dunland Media, because this evening's event is going to be videoed, and it will be available after, I'm gonna say five to seven days, because there's some editing of just smoothing out the rough edges. And thanks to Matt Moore from ninety-six, seventy Eagle, or Hometown News. You may be aware from Facebook, or it's also a website. The video will be available for a click, so you can spread the word to folks who want, who couldn't be here tonight, and will want to see what we are, what we have on our floor, those folks who wish to be a part of the school board. So, our great thanks to Kim, who at the very last minute put that part of things together. It's a huge ask, and appreciate it so much. I'd like to thank Gloria Jones, who is down here in the front, and she is our thankless person of keeping the time and saying stop. So, she will make herself known to the candidates at least. And last but not least, I certainly would want to thank Tim King for being our moderator. So, let me tell you about Tim. He, first of all, Maria Fruth was to have been our moderator, but she is in caregiver mode. So, we are so blessed to have Tim come and join us this evening, and what did I do but leave my words?
I've been glad to do, but not as well as with him on this. So, Tim is a resident of Roland Prairie, and then if you know him, because he has been in the area now for a little bit. I think you might certainly call this home, which we are very glad to know. But he retired after a thirty-five year career in education and administration from Louisville, Kentucky. He began as an elementary music teacher, and then he went all the way to service as the education director for the Louisville Symphony, and finally was the executive director for that illustrious symphony. And while he was the executive director, the Louisville Orchestra was awarded the Leonard Bernstein Award for the League of American Orchestras, which recognized one single orchestra in the United States that offers the most effective orchestra instrumentation program in the country. I think that's quite a feather in his cap. So, he comes to us now after having retired, and yet in Fort County, he became the executive director for the La Porte County Symphony. And then he is just as large and worky, and a very educationally esteemed man, so we are glad to have him here. So, in just a moment, I will advise him on, but I would like to help you know what the format is for these folks. Okay, Tim will introduce it. But the plans for the evening are that they will each have thirty and three minutes to get your background, what you aspire to see happen with the Fort schools. And after that, Tim will be giving some questions for each of them and for all of them at the same time. And then at some point, we will ask you if you have questions, and you will note there are microphones in the front.
Thank you Fran. First of all, you're gonna notice immediately that I'm not from here. Everybody says, "Where are you from?" I'm from central Kentucky, and I moved here about eleven years ago. It was the best move I've ever made. I love it here in Fort County. Everyone's been so nice and so kind. And so, I really appreciate you being asked to do this tonight. We have five candidates for your La Porte City School Board, and they are from your left to right, Jim Arnold, Monica Beatty, Maria Carpenter, Ed Gillerland, and Tucker King. And I wanna go on and say that there's no relation here, but that we know of between us there. So, Mr. Arnold, I think we'll start with you with your three minutes, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Tim, thank you very much. First of all, I wanna thank Fran for calling us and notifying everybody. I think it's a great opportunity for us to be seen and heard, and what I've faced with the voice and so forth. Thank you so much for your information, and thank you folks for giving up your night tonight to come and listen to speak a little bit. Real quick on my background, I'm from Michigan City, Indiana. I had a degree there. Went to Melbourne University after I completed four years of United States Air Force. Went to Melbourne University, went to Bay Stanley, going to school full-time. Attained my bachelor's degree there, raised a family, joined the Sheriff's Department in nineteen sixty-seven. I spent thirty-two years under the Fort County Sheriff's Department, eight years as their elected sheriff. Along with that, I served eight years in the Indiana State Senate representing this district right here, four years as subject manager out of the Highway Department. And past eight years, I've been a member of the Fort County Community School Board. But what's more important is the fact that I thoroughly enjoy my career. I've been honored and blessed to serve the people of Fort County, to get the opportunity to serve a variety of offices, to do a variety of things and things that most people won't have the opportunity to do, including a lot of people at UCLD, but that's not the main thing that we were here tonight. We're here tonight because I still have the desire, I still have the fire burning, and I still have the dedication and commitment to serve a Fort County School Board. If I didn't, believe me, it would have been a lie, as you sure as they know, I'm not gonna see that. We have made some great changes in the Fort school system. Over the years, schools have taken a lot of flak from the public, from politicians, and they haven't done their background as far as I'm concerned about what's been going on in the great things of the college. We have a new superintendent, which we'll be talking about tonight, an absolutely outstanding superintendent now. Has committed herself to bettering the Fort schools and the programs that are in it. We have a great school, you have one minute, morning now? We have a great school board right now. Some of them have chosen not to see direction. Do you have one of them, Marie Gill, that's sitting out there right now? And Ron Dispenza served a number of years on that board, and chose not to see direction again. The main thing is that, folks, we're gonna talk about our programs, our needs for the school. My belief is this, whatever we do, the hard decisions we make, they aren't always popular. Might, it might have thirty-five years of elected office, they don't expect popularity, but the main thing is it's the betterment of our community and the children that are in that school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next, we have Monica Beatty. Ms. Beatty?
Thank you, Tim. I also would like to thank Fran for bringing us here this evening. My name is Monica Beatty, and I am a product of the La Porte school system. In nineteen seventy-eight, my mother moved my siblings and I to La Porte, Indiana. And upon moving there, we moved into the La Porte parent's houses. And at the time, they didn't know if we were gonna go to Hamley School or Kingsbury School. And also during that time, there was no transportation available to us. It was decided that we would go to Hamley School, and we would have to walk a mile and a half to get to school. My mother and other single mothers banded together and walked us a mile and a half to school in the winter months, and anybody that knows, in the seventies and eighties, it was really cold in La Porte. And because of her sacrifice, and they picketed, they interviewed with news anchors, they went to the school board, and eventually, we were afforded buses to the schools. When I heard of the school, got wind of the school closing of Kingsford Heights, my mind went back to nineteen seventy-eight, when my mother had to walk us to school in the cold weather. And I knew at that point that I needed to fight for my community. But aside that, fighting for my community, I also had to fight for the La Porte community school system. Because upon attending meetings and being given different reasons as to why our school was closing, there were some things that concerned me. I am uneducated. I graduated from Lansing University with a bachelor's degree in accounting. And upon hearing the deficiencies with the accounts, that caused concern for me. And at that point, I knew that the experience that I have at being an accounting manager and a revenue audit manager for eighteen-plus years, I felt that my experience was needed. My priorities for the La Porte School Board would be turn financial plans into ensuring financial transparency to the community. Open communication with the community, seeking input from stockholders, backholders, build partnerships to foster strong connection between the school board and the community, ensuring physical and cyber safety for our children and our staff while they're with us and in our care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Next, we have Maria Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I too wanna echo my thanks to Fran and everybody that she had listed who's come in to volunteer their time to set this up for us. Yes, my name is Maria Carpenter. My friends and family call me Ria. I married into La Porte, so my husband's family has been here for around forty years, I believe. He is a graduate of La Porte High School. We have been married for almost twenty-two years, and we have two very young adult daughters, so we are at the beginning phases of our MDS syndrome. My background is that I have a bachelor's science degree in business marketing, and I worked in that field until I gave birth to our first daughter. And currently, I have been substitute teaching for the Michigan City School District. So, I have gotten in to the classroom and been able to see what's happening, and been able to talk to countless teachers there about some of their frustrations with administration, or just the way things are done, or what's happening in their classroom. As well, I, for three years, taught ESL online to kids in China, so I got to see a whole different school system, and see the way things were done there, and the focus of the kids, which gave me a new perspective. So, I have been involved with kids for many years. I have been involved in children's ministry at my local church. And I have also been involved in an organization called First Steps locally here, which helps families in need. And this has given me some relationships here in the community that I really value, and some perspective that I think is unique. But what I wanted to see as a taxpayer, as a mom, as somebody who is currently substitute teaching, I wanna see kids put down the electronics, and I want to see them become a love of learners, to embrace the learning, and to become lifelong learners. Because I think something that is not imparted enough to our kids is that you learn for the rest of their life. And so, I wanna come alongside the teachers with what they've been saying, and with the administrators, and get that kind of focus back to the kids, because I think it's invaluable for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Next, we have Ed Gillerland. Mr. Gillerland?
Fran, thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate your efforts, and I'd also like to wish the resident candidates the very best as this is moving forward, and I wanna thank them for putting their name out there. It's not an easy thing to do, and I appreciate the fact that these four individuals, other individuals, have shown an interest in the education in Fort. I've got forty-four years. I'm on my forty-fourth year involved in education. Sixteen as a teacher and a coach, twenty-five years as the director of athletics at La Porte High School, and I now work for the Indiana High School Athletic Association as an associate commissioner. I graduated from Fort in nineteen seventy-seven. Married my wife, Marie, in nineteen seventy-eight, graduated to La Porte. We both were involved in athletics here. She's obviously served on the board for a number of years now, three terms, and she's stepping down from that. You know, I'm hoping that I can fill that position. We have three grown children that graduated from La Porte, and I have grandchildren that are now attending La Porte Community Schools. I've got a lot invested in La Porte Community Schools and in the community of La Porte. I'm very passionate about it. I'm very vested in this school corporation. I wanna see the very best for our students in La Porte, La Porte Community Schools. I would suggest to you that I wanna see our schools attractive. I wanna see the whole school corporation attracted to students. I wanna see it attracted to employees. I wanna see it attracted to the bus drivers, to the custodians, to the maintenance people, to everybody that's employed. We've gotta find a way to make this place attractive, to bring people in that wanna be part of the Fort Community School Corporation. We've also gotta work at making it physically attractive. We've got some facilities that need some upgrade. But we've got to make this an attractive school corporation that people wanna attend. We don't wanna lose our young people that wanna attend other schools. We wanna keep them here, and we want them to grow up and be a slicer. That's what their goal is. That's the only thing I ever wanted to do when I was a little kid, was to grow up and be a slicer. And that's what we need to get back to. We've gotta set that as our goals. We've gotta find the funds to be able to do those things, to make it so that people wanna work here, they wanna attend schools here, and this is the place they wanna be. Again, as I mentioned, I'm very passionate about the school corporation and the community. I love this community, and I love the school corporation, and I just wanna be a part of helping it out.
Thank you. Routing out our selected candidates is Tucker King. Mr. King?
Thank you all for the opportunity here. My name is Tucker King. I'm a third-generation slicer, born and bred, and I'm running for the Fort Community School Corporation for three reasons. One, to improve communication with the community. Two, to provide quality education for all. And three, to enhance access to special programs such as trade and technology. I'm a graduate of Fort. I graduated in twenty-fifteen. I'm a departmental college and commercial consultant for environmental and computer science. I am married, and I have a two-year-old daughter. I intend to raise her and all of my future children, God willing, as Fort slicers. Today, I stand before you, a young man, said really, a young man with an optimistic vision for the future. The future of our community. Together, we must cultivate a sense of pride and community around our schools, a slicer pride that deeply resonates with our students. When they see a community that values their contributions, offers opportunities for growth, and fosters an environment of success, we are much more likely to see them stay in our schools and invest in their futures here. The question we must ask ourselves is, how do we create that environment? First and foremost, we need to engage in meaningful community development opportunities in and around the schools. We must empower our young people to take ownership of their environments. This can be achieved through mentorship programs, internships, and hands-on projects, by giving them a seat that they will, were not only investing in their futures, but inviting fresh perspectives, which will change our positions. We also need to celebrate the students' successes, and showcase the talent of the faculty. Let's create platforms for our students to show their innovations, hard-to-reach entrepreneurial spirit. By spotlighting their achievements in academics, athletics, and expert curricula, we can feel a sense of pride and belonging that encourages them to envision their futures here. Moreover, we must ensure that our institutions align with the need for local account by fostering partnerships between schools, businesses, and local government to enhance access to programs that deep directly complement up in right areas of the community. We must be proactive in developing the curriculum to prepare our students for the jobs of tomorrow. Finally, let's engage in open dialogue, listen to each other's ideas and concerns. When people feel heard and empowered, we are far more likely to contribute to the community that we love. In conclusion, the future of our community lies by the hands of our students. By instilling pride, providing development opportunities, and creating an environment where they flourish, we can inspire a new generation to take on the challenges of tomorrow. When you vote for Tucker King, you are choosing to work together to build up our students, fostering an environment that our young people not only want to stay in, but can't wait to return to. My name is Tucker King. I ask you to vote for me this November for the Fort Community Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, now we're going to go into the question mode. I have some questions for our five candidates, and we're going to start with Mr. Arnold with question one, and then question two will be Ms. Beatty will start, question three, Ms. Carpenter will start, and we'll go down that way. My first question for all five of you is, and we'll start with Mr. Arnold. What do you feel is an important measure of student success?
Well, I guess yesterday, they could be answered several different ways. We could talk about what they do with success after school, where they end up with their life, so forth. But I think a measure of success is the people that are graduating from our community and stay in our community, deciding to stay in the board and make it a better place to live, instead of moving on. And I know that this is gonna be a great discussion with a lot of people, because we're losing so much great talent because of jobs, because of education, because of professionals, and so forth. And I think a measure of success in our school system can be measured by those people just like up here today. The number of people that graduated from Fort High School and are still here in the Fort school system. And that's what we wanna do. We wanna get those people educated. We wanna let them pursue the program that they want, the career that they want. We wanna encourage them to stay right here in our community and give back, just like all of us are doing here today.
Great. Thank you. I forgot to say that each candidate has one minute. I apologize. I shouldn't have said that before. I think you're under the minute. You're fine here, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that. Ms. Beatty? Same question. What do you feel is an important measure of success? That's gonna be the question for all five of you.
I think that an important measure of success is that when our children have completed their tenure in the La Porte school system, they're able to go out in any community, any community and be successful. Of course, we would like for them to come back to our community and blossom. But our main goal is for them to be productive citizens wherever they end up being, and that would measure the success of our school system.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
I think that an important measure of success is being able to learn for themselves once they've completed the school, and to be able to choose and to follow through on, whether it's college, or some sort of trade school, or some other certification program, that they are able to go on and learn, and to be able to equip themselves for those jobs, or even relationships down the road. I think success is a variety of things, but if the students aren't equipped to learn, then they're not going to be able to follow through on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gillerland.
Well, just kinda echo what everybody else has indicated. It's if, when they leave La Porte Community Schools, are they prepared for what's out there in the future? Are they going to be responsible citizens? Are they going to be productive citizens? Did we do our job in the school corporation to prepare them for whatever avenue they choose to go to if they decide to go to college, they go into the workforce? Did we do our job in the school corporation to prepare them for that? And if we see those kids moving forward, we see them graduate, they become successful, they're productive citizens, then I think we've done our job, and that's how I would measure success.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Yeah, to add to that, I think that we must measure our successes, like the outcomes of our students. Long-term, La Porte has produced many fine alumni, like Jim said previously. I've seen people in the crowd that I know contribute to our community every day. And it's important for us to look at the outcomes of our students and see where we might not be successful, and try to improve, so maybe programs that could be used. Specifically, I'd like to see some kind of involvement in trades and their sciences.
All right, thank you. Question number two. Have you ever participated in parent-teacher organizations? And please share any examples, and we'll start with Ms. Beatty.
Have I ever shared? I have not.
Participated in any parent-teacher organizations?
I have not participated in any parent-teacher organizations. I am a single mother that does not have any children, but I do have a strong desire to see children succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
I have had the experience of participating, and our younger daughter decided to go to a private school, her high school, and so they had a parent-teacher association that I was involved in for the past year and a half as well. I have been coaching different kinds of sports leagues for my kids, so that has allowed me to interact both with the teachers of the schools and the parents that were part of those organizations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillerland.
As a funding director of Fort, we formed a community advisory group that we met. We did that for a number of years, where we would bring what we felt were leaders in the community to come in and meet with the athletic department, and share their ideas, their thoughts, what their vision for the athletic department was, where they thought we were falling short, and I would use that group. That's close, other than being on the other, as a parent-teacher organization, where I was part of the teachers, not the parent part of it, but other than that, that's all I should have done.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I have not yet had that experience. I hope I will. Like I said previously, I'm a young man, and I have a two-year-old daughter, so I'm getting up to that stage. I haven't attended a highly modern school, PTA meeting, because to meet with the moms and see what their concerns were. Other than that, no, I haven't.
Great. Third question. The biggest budget items for the school corporation involve facilities. How do you feel the school board should go about facility planning? Ms. Carpenter?
What?
I'm sorry. Did you not hear what I said?
I heard you. Did I not answer your question?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Of course, yes, yes. Here, I told you to round off, and I'm following my own rules. There you go. Yes, Mr. Arnold, sorry about that.
I was very fortunate. I was very active at one time in Pritzfield, PTA, and became president of the PTA Pritzfield big school, Mr. Howes, who knows, old people loved her, Mr. Howes was the principal. And I was present there, and during my term, I was a captain, I'm sure, but I organized with the teachers' association at Boston High School. Mr. Stricker was the principal at that time. We sat in a law enforcement class, and I talked there for about six weeks.
Okay, thank you. I apologize about that.
I'll talk to him.
The next question, I'll repeat. The next question is, the biggest budget items for the school corporation involve facilities. How do you feel the school board should go about facility planning? Ms. Carpenter, you're up.
So, I believe it was at the last school board meeting that I attended, they had one of the chief building managers or custodians, I forget what his title was, come and show pictures of some of the things that they'd done in the buildings, and how they had used the money. So, that was very interesting to watch, how they were trying to both aesthetically and functionally change the buildings and the grounds to make it more appealing and more functional for the students and the faculty. So, I would just continue that route of just the people who are there, who are actually working on the buildings and in the buildings. I would wanna get their input first and foremost to see what's needed, what is going to be effective, and what we can do with that money.
Thank you, Mr. Gillerland.
There may be a need for a feasibility study of some sort, to look at the facilities, to go through and determine where our biggest needs are, and what needs to be determined, I believe. I know there was one done a number of years ago when I was still working at Fort High School. That may be something we need to do again, to determine where our biggest needs are, and what facilities need to be improved. I think I have a pretty good understanding of the school corporation, and I have some ideas where I think it needs to be, but I think we need to have some official, that an outside group can come in and let us know what needs to be done. The biggest concern I have is the cost, and where are the funds gonna come from for this? And that's something that I have a concern about, is how are we gonna fund this? It goes back to making our school corporation look attractive, not only from the standpoint of paying teachers and wanting people to be here, but our facilities have to have curb appeal. They need to look good. People need to come into our community and look at our school corporation and say, "That's a place I wanna send my kids."
Thank you, Mr. King.
I think that it's important that we provide facilities that are beautiful to our students, that beauty incenses a sense of pride, instills a sense of pride, and it creates a space where people feel comfortable, and one thing to aspire for more, I would say. In particular, how do we respond to facility needs? As a part of my job, I work on long-term plans for capital budgets, engineering projects. I assist in making sure that, you know, large-scale projects can get done. I don't know enough about our budget yet, but I hope that once I get elected, that I learn and help in any way I can.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Feasibility studies are a very important part of school board's obligation and duties. We have one several years ago, and if you think back, that's what brought the PAC Center, the high school, into existence, and also the Remont and Hamley School, and we just opened last year our bus garage at Fort Fort. Those are the results of feasibility studies. We rely on those studies. As a matter of fact, when it was given to us... As a matter of fact, when it was given to us, we had about six years ago, uh, and I'm sure it's going to come up tonight, where it's going to include that feasibility study. So, they play a very important part of our obligations and duties. And, uh, and they had just mentioned the financial aspect of the courses is a big drawback. Um, it's not going to change, folks. We're going to get them talking a little bit about finances and so forth with the school system. You know, that's going to be a big...
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
When we begin to talk about big-budget projects, first of all, I believe we need to find out what the priorities are. What buildings are in the most need of updates? During the summer, they did do a lot of outside decorating, and the yards look wonderful. They're amazing. But when we begin to talk about structures and how that systems, we need to find out where the priorities are and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, in your opinion, are La Porte schools lagging on par or ahead of the curve in areas of equity and/or inclusion? And I'll start with Mr. Gilliam.
You know, I have the opportunity to travel to a lot of schools with the position I have with the IHSA now. And what I find is a lot of the problems and concerns or issues that we're faced with in La Porte are going on all. I've been to, just since July 10th, I've been to fifty-some schools. And when I go in and work with athletic administrators in those schools, I'm finding out they have the same thing. So, I'm going to suggest to you that La Porte is at par in those areas. Um, there's always room for improvement in equity and inclusion. We can always do more. Uh, but at this point in time, I think we're headed in the right direction. We're trying to do those things. And again, the issues that we're faced with here in La Porte are issues in a lot of school corporations throughout the state.
Thank you. Mr. King?
I would like to say that I really, I don't know what the facts of the ground are, but I am willing to learn and find out more. Um, as far as equity and inclusion is a curve, I mean, is involved, I do believe that it's important for us to offer the same opportunities to all of our students regardless of their background, of work. As a lot of our population under the poverty line, environmental, environmental factors included. And so, it's important for us to not, it's important for us to not look at those factors and provide those opportunities regardless of the student factors.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
I think we can always do better, no matter what the facilities and so forth, equity and inclusion is a very, very important part of our school system as well. We want people to feel welcome in La Porte. We encourage them to apply for positions. We have job fairs. We just had one here two weeks ago, looking for bus back, looking for teachers, looking for specialized, uh, something, uh, matter, so forth. So, you know, if we can do better, I'm telling you, and there needs to be power in La Porte because we don't turn anybody away. Everybody has your voice heard if they want to step up in here.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
I think it's very, I think it's very advantageous of us to understand cultural differences. In the La Porte Community School System, we have seventy-five percent Caucasian, two-point-seven African-American, fifteen-point-five percent Hispanic. I think it's very important that when our children enter into our schools, that they see someone that looks like them. When children have a sense of, when they see someone that's able to, um, relate to them, they feel a sense of trust in the community and a trust in the communities that they're around. So, I do think that it's very important that we go outside of the boundaries of just our area to recruit teachers, EPAs, so that our children can feel safe in the environments that we live in.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
So, I would also reiterate, I don't know, and I'm without the other school districts, to be able to say where we land. But what I do know is substituting in Michigan State school districts is there's a different makeup of the students and the faculty there than there probably is here in La Porte. Um, what I would encourage though is whoever, whether it be faculty or students, that we raise the bar and not come down to a certain level just because we think that we have a certain community within the school district. But I would encourage our faculty and our students to raise the bar of education and always be striving to be better.
Thank you. Uh, our next question is, in your opinion, do you feel it is important for school board members to be in the classrooms? If so, how do you feel that should happen? And if not, please explain why you feel that way. Mr. King?
I think it's important that school board members have access to the schools and to be able to see what occurs every day. I mean, we, it would be impossible for us to make informed decisions without being able to witness what occurs. Um, I think that it doesn't necessarily need to be unguided access, but I believe that without the opportunity for us to survey, we would be unable to see how things operate in reality, and it's important for us to have that access.
Mr. Arnold?
Thank you. Well, seven years ago, I began a program on my own for me. I lived in every school, worked in the school system twice a year. It was very successful because I have out here walked through with the principal, not looking, it's like to pick up information about, you know, what's good, what's bad, and see what's actually going on in the classroom and the board. And also, our school board president, sitting right over here in the house, he's doing the same thing as well. Going out, making sure that we are visible, accessible, and accountable to the teachers. If they want to talk to us, we're there. So, I think it's very important, extremely important, that they're here. But here's the situation, folks. Let's not predict it. I'm a special case. I'm retired. This is my full-time job. The other people on the school board, most of them have jobs. They can't get away like they can, so don't criticize them. They still have the fun, you know, still have to bring home their bacon, so it's family. So, I do that, and I know that they all taught, all taught with love to go into school more often than they can. So, Ryan and myself, I've been doing that for the last couple of years.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
I do believe that, um, our community, our school communities need to see us in the community, in the schools, at the after-school programs. We do need to be visible at some point.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I think that having substitute taught, I get a very unique perspective, and I get to talk to the teachers one-on-one. I also get to see it firsthand what is going on in the classroom. So, I think it's invaluable to understanding, um, not just the dollars and the accounting or the fixing of the buildings, but how does this going to end up impacting both the faculty and the students?
Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
I certainly think it's very important. I wouldn't want to underestimate how important it is for not only school board members, but administration to go into the buildings. And I always enjoyed when we'd have a school board member or somebody stop in to see me at the high school. Usually Jim wanted something, but, um, I mean, other than that, it was pretty nice to have him come in and talk to me about what was going on in the athletics. And I think those teachers appreciate that. I think they appreciate you being in the building and knowing that you care. So, I think it's very, very important that we get out, not only to the schools, but be visible. Go to the choir concerts, go to the athletic events, go to wherever, whatever activities are going on. Try to be as visible as you possibly can. Like Jim said, he's got a lot of time in the world. My schedule's pretty flexible, and Marie wants me out of the house, so I can get to all things during the day. So, um, you know, that's something I would enjoy doing, and I know that the administrators at the schools value that visit from school board members and the central office administration.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question. How can the school board help improve test scores? Mr. Arnold? Test scores. How can the school board help improve test scores?
Well, first of all, I would have to pass out kudos to Dr. Tonigl, who is more or less the head of the school system right now. He's the superintendent, and done a magnificent job. Now, how can the school affect it? Let me tell you something. The teachers need more credit, more support than what they're getting. When you stop to think in our school, when you see some of those kids, what did they learn? To zip up their pants or button their shirts or say thank you or please. They learned it from school teachers. They're not getting the credit they deserve, and that's why it's important to be supportive of school teachers. They're doing the best job they can and don't get the credit they deserve. So, how can we improve it? By supporting the school teachers. Not criticizing them, but supporting them. You certainly wouldn't go out and criticize your doctor in some project, and they may think you, "Why do they find it so easy to criticize the teaching?" And the teachers in our school system. These people are professionals. They tell you they went out to school, got educated for that, and they're doing a great job in our school. So, what we can do to improve it is make sure that they have the proper finances and the proper equipment to carry out their job.
Ms. Bailey?
I would have to one-hundred percent agree with what Jim has said, of being able to support our teachers in the classroom.
Great. Uh, Ms. Carpenter?
I think that we need to look at the actual tests that we're using and see whether or not they are a good, um, gauge of what the kids are learning and how they're learning. I think we also need to look at how often we test and at what age we start testing, and whether or not that's really fruitful. Um, I think that we also need to, um, just encourage a lot of reading and just grounding them in vocabulary, going back to the basics, and getting our teachers to encourage their students to do that as well.
Mr. Gilliam?
Well, I think if you looked at the paper to kind of echo what Jim said, um, Ben Tonigl had, uh, there was a nice article about how our test scores with the I read were up because I think they put some innovative programs in. I think they're doing some things to try to reach out to these kids, identify those kids at an early age that are struggling and provide opportunities for them to get better. We kind of just got to stay out of their way and trust those people to do their job. We've got to hire, and again, I hate to go back to the same term, but we've got to make our school corporation attractive so that we're getting the best teachers, we're getting the best administrators here we can, and let them do their job. Be supportive of the innovative programs that they're wanting to come up with. Think outside the box. Uh, think of doing things different. We've got to let them do that. That's what they're trained to do. And trust them and support them, uh, provide them the, the, the equipment, the, the, whatever they need in order to do their job and do it effectively.
And Mr. King?
Yeah, I mean, to echo what everyone else has said, I guess, to improve test score, I think it's important first, though, that we make our decisions based off of what is best for the children. We have to look at what programs are successful, like we highlighted, uh, Mr. Tonigl's success at bringing up our high rate scores. Um, and we need to find the barriers that are causing our test scores to come down in some cases, and try to remove those as much as possible. I think prioritizing budgets so that the programs that are successful are going to be funded is probably number one. And then, just, we need to get back to creating a culture of success. When I was in school here at La Porte, we had, it was a given that we had good test scores, and it was a part of our culture that we were proud of those, in those numbers, and I would like to see that put first again.
Okay, um, next question. Uh, do you feel the school corporation is in a healthy financial situation? Ms. Bailey?
As I stated previously, um, when I started first attending the school board meetings, I was concerned financially for our school board. Um, without knowing in depth of where we stand right now, um, I cannot effectively answer that question, but I do see that there are some deficits there that need to be addressed. I did review the last audit that was submitted to the State Board of Accounts, and that is concerning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Carpenter?
Um, I know that the budget was created. They were talking, um, at one of the last couple of meetings. Um, I know that they're buying a bunch of school buses, and they're trying to update those. Um, so I know there's a lot of costs that are coming down that, um, we need to really take a look at. But, um, I think really we need to be wise as the school board with managing the money and making sure that it's, um, going to the best thing that we can possibly do.
Mr. Gilliam?
I'm not privy to the, all of the information that I need to be able to answer that question, you know, one-hundred percent accurately. What I can, I believe I can say that would be accurate is that we can continue on with the status quo of what we've got now. Our concern is, how are we going to finance some of the improvements that we need to make? And some of the things outside the normal operations of what we're doing now. Our enrollment's down a few more kids again this year, and every time we lose a kid, we lose some funding. So, we need to, again, make our school corporation attractive, bring students in, people that want to be here, and then our funding will return. But we're going to have to also think of alternatives for our funding. We can't get everything done, whether it's facilities or pay raises for the, for the, uh, the employees of the school corporation in whatever area of that, whether it's, whether it's the teachers, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's food service, whatever it may be, it's going to be difficult to fund those in our present financial situation, I think. And then give them and make us competitive with the other school corporations in the area.
Mr. King?
So, from my understanding, previously, we're at a loss for quite a few years, and it looks like this year it's shaping up to the life of being out of our habit. It seems like we have the right people in charge currently to be making those decisions. I don't know enough offhand, but I think that regardless of what occurs, there are going to be some hard decisions that we will have to make to prioritize our budget, and I'm willing to look at the facts of the case and make those decisions.
Okay. Mr. Arnold?
Well, I think that the whole suspension of the school board and the school system, and the hopes that we're going to be able to pay our bills financially, we're going to solve, but let me tell you, we are. Through we made some cuts, and we've left down our budget, some things that I need to cut back, we were able to give everyone in the school system across the board the pay raise issue. Financially, we're still solving. I can tell you this, the State Board of Accounts, after we heard this issue about school shortages just last year, the State Board of Accounts, and we met with them, worked down our budget through Dr. Hunt and so many others, the State Board of Accounts went back and checked the sports community school assistance records back to two thousand and sixteen and gave us a clean door out, and said, "We're fine." Now, could we use more money? Absolutely. Now, we had the point where we can be a little concerned? Absolutely. But it's not the school system's fault. We're not getting the money downstate because of student enrollment. That's what's really starting to hurt us. Next year, we're really concerned. So, as far as the financials are now, we're in good shape. We're going to make it this year, or we're waiting for the pay raises.
I have one more question before we open it up to our audience or your questions. And my last question for our candidates is, in light of issues of violence in schools across our country, what steps do you believe the school board might take to provide a higher degree of protection? Or do you feel the corporation is doing an adequate job? Ms. Carpenter, you're first.
Well, we end with a big one. Yeah.
I saved it for last, that's why.
I know that, um, the Michigan State High School had, um, somebody posted something a couple of weeks ago, and so they had an hour delay because they were checking all the bags, and the students were not allowed to, um, leave the bag, take the bags into the classroom because of that. And then they adjusted the schedules for the rest of the week and kept the no-bag-in-classroom policy. So, I think part of what the school board needs to do is, um, just talk to the superintendents and the principals and the administrators about if something comes up, how are we going to handle this? And really just have that plan in place because it can't be an afterthought, or it can't be a, "Hey, let's get together and meet on this." It's got to be something that's already settled and decided on so that it can be implemented quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Gilliam?
Again, when I visit other schools, what we're doing at La Porte is, is, is consistent with what I see throughout the state. Um, some schools are a little, uh, a little more stringent, um, in the sense that they've got some metal detectors when we go to athletic events that I may visit, and they may have to go through some of those. I don't think we're to that point. I'm not sure that you can ever be one-hundred percent guarantee that you're going to be a safe school. It's, it's, it's a difficult thing to do, and I'll give you a... It's, it's, it's a difficult thing to do and I, I'll give you a for instance that was always a concern of mine is we're really in pretty good shape during the school day, but those doors at, at three o'clock when those kids go out to the high school. Now, we've got so many activities going on after school and that's a time that worries me, is always worrying me as an athletic director. Are we going to be prepared for that? We think we have been, uh, but that's always a challenge. It's a challenge everywhere. I think we are doing, we're consistent with what everybody else is doing throughout the state. Um, I think we're, we're on par with what we should be doing, um, but again, it's something that is a concern all the time. And we've, we have drills, we do the things that are necessary to try to protect our students and they have, uh, I'm sure they're going to continue to do those things.
Mr. King.
Well, I mean, I think first and foremost, going back to what I said previously, we have to protect children first. What is good for their health? I think that you can always find ways to improve security. I think it seems like the high school's done a really good job of improvements to their best fuel. Um, from what I saw at that high level, I'm a huge school, different school that has security extremely like high in this, in this regard, you know, with the, the way that they're checking in and checking out. It seems like it's that way. That's a pure improvement. There's a science about all this they're signing in. I think we're doing the, a, a good job, but I mean, it seems to me that there's always some room for, for, uh, I don't know what that improvement is and I, I think I have people who are more and see what we do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Arnold.
Well, I'm just saying what a saint's status here as it is, ten years ago, we started having to put police officers in the school system. Our kids wanted to date, the teacher wanted to teach, and we got to put police officers in our school system. But it's a fact of life and it's a serious thing. Now, I would suggest and encourage you folks to pay attention to the survey that Dr. Woods in your office put together and sent out. I've got a lot of questions on there with about weapon detection, whether we want to weapon detection in our school system. The result of that survey will be that, I think, and on that board meeting, we're going to discuss it. And from what we understand overwhelmingly, people are in agreement, yes, they want to see that. We've already moved somewhat forward in La Porte High School. We just put a brand new security advance into high school and you come in there. So we're moving, we're moving along with that, trying to do the best we can. So can we, I, we can always do better, can always do better, but you know, with just the time and the fact that we live in today, we're going to have to continue to monitor the, uh, the going on nationwide and whole, it doesn't happen to us.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bailey.
I think that we are moving in the right direction and even talking and having the conversation of school safety. Um, as Mr. Arnold, Arnold said, unfortunately, we're at a point where our children's protection is and should be our number one priority. And the school corporation has started making those changes. And, um, Dr. Wood did send out the survey. If you've not filled that survey out, send it back in. It's important that community has participation within the school board. If we do not have participation from the community, then we're, we're left to make those decisions on our own. Again, tell everyone you know, fill out the survey, send it back in. That is the only way that we'll know and we can communicate to get those changes made.
Great, thank you all. Thank you all so much. It's very informative. I've, I've really enjoyed hearing. I think we're so fortunate to have these five people ready for school board. This is, I'm very impressed. Thank you. And now we'll open it up, um, to you. Um, if you have a question, uh, we have microphones down here. Um, your question can, any form of a question, not a statement, uh, so we made a question. It can either be directed to one candidate or you can, you can let them know that you would like for all the candidates to respond. So, uh, just please come forward if you'd like to do so. I think we have one right now.
Hello, I have two questions and this is for everyone. The first question. Um, you asked in the very beginning, um, how can you determine the success of your children? And I think the school board plays a part in that, but not a very part. I think the parents play probably been a bigger part than what the school board plays. So as you can see tonight, we don't have a lot of parents here. So how at the school board can you get the parents involved?
Great question. Uh, I triple start with Mr. Gilman. I'm sorry, you are next.
Um, you know, that's a good question and I think you're spot on that parental involvement is crucial. And I think if you look at any statistic, any, anywhere around that would show that those parents that are involved in their kids' education and chances for those kids to be, those students to be successful is much greater. How we get parented, there's a lot on parents' plates. We've got, uh, many broken families. We've got, uh, both parents working to get them involved is a difficult thing. And I think that's a challenge. I think we need to, we need to reach out to our administration and say, what ideas do you have? And trust that those people that are the experts, how can we get you involved, uh, how can we get those parents involved more? I think that's a very valid point, a very good question.
And I just wanted to clarify, you didn't want all the candidates to respond, is that clear? Okay, Mr. Mr. King.
So, I mean, as I stated in my opening speech, I think it's important that we, we build a, a community around the ownership of, of the schools. So I mean, students need, you know, power, but along with that, like the parents as well. The parent involvement was huge in all of the athletics I took place in and all of the, the, the extracurriculars. Without the parents, we can't get the success. We need buy-in from everybody. And as I stated, I mean, my number one goal is to increase communication, but along with that is to, to increase community involvement. I think, I think a, a good idea that I, I kind of wanted to bring forward would be either monthly or, or quarterly at town hall meetings where outside of a board, like a school board meeting, we got the ability for parents to come and talk to us and ask us questions, get the right answers. And, and, you know, make their voice heard and be able to power it to make those decisions.
Great, um, Mr. Arnold.
Great question, you know, and if you can figure that out, I'd like to know the answer. You know, taking our school board meetings, we're like if we have three, four people come on a school board meeting. Unless, unless you're going to change coaches or hire a new coach, then they come out of the ceiling.
I never know.
For that, that, you know, but when it comes to the school programs, it comes to discipline in schools and so forth, nobody comes to the school board to discuss them. Now we have a three minute public comment before that's not a question and answer period. But we'll all try to be accessible and accountable. I have no problem with people calling me when we're on the side and talking about it. Other than school board meetings and so forth, I encourage it. If I'm going to ask for your vote, I'm going to make myself accessible to you. I can rush a shirt.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey.
I think it's very important that we as a school board make the community feel like they are valued and that their opinion, opinions matter. And the reason why I say that is because I want to find school board meetings. And now what time has a school board member approached me? Now, what if I had been a parent scoping out the corporation to bring my, my son or daughter there? I, um, I sat back and I waited to see if anybody would approach me and nobody did. I would go early and nobody approached me. So I feel like it's very important that when we invite community in and we invite parents in, that we make them feel like they're valued, make them feel like their opinion matters.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter.
I'm not sure that the school board has a lot of interaction with the parents, um, like others have said, unless they come to the school board meetings. So, um, if we did want to interact and, um, involve ourselves with the parents, we would probably have to go to those events. I think, um, it's probably better as a school board to interact more with the teachers because the teachers are really the ones who are doing, dealing with the students on a daily basis and contacting the parents and trying to have that relationships with the parents. Um, I agree with what everybody said, it's hard with a lot of, um, single parents, a lot of, um, kids going to different homes on different weekends. You know, to get those parents involved and have communication. So I would just try to see if, um, as a school board member, I can go to those events and introduce myself to the parents. And then secondly, and probably more of my focus would be on talking to the teachers and seeing how, uh, we can communicate better and get more involved with the parents.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, I think you said you had a second question.
Yes, and my second and last question is for Ruby. When they asked a question about diversity and inclusion and your answer was, we need to raise the bar. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, so I think that, um, we have a tendency to, um, you know, compare ourselves to other schools where you say, oh, we have a bunch of kids who are low poverty or, um, you know, we have a, maybe, um, a lot of girls or a lot of kids in this, um, ethnic background and therefore, um, we have a certain R with that. But I really believe that if we are teaching our kids to learn, to really, um, grasp the fundamentals of learning, you know, when I was growing up, it was called the three Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic, even though the last one is the R or the second one either, but I think just going back to those basics and not saying this is the community and therefore, you know, we just have this standard, but really trying to elevate the students and the teachers in the community to, um, as I said, to be, success is going to be going out and whatever they want to tackle down the road, they're going to have the, um, the fundamental education background and foundation to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to comment, please.
Oh, absolutely.
I feel like that, um, to say that when your child is being bullied because of who they are, it's important for them to have someone that they feel like they can talk to. And then when we talk about diversity, we really need to have someone that our children are able to go to. We're living in a day and age where children aren't being bullied because of the color of their skin, the way they speak. Um, in the city of La Porte, we, times are changing. It, it's not like it was when in the nineteen seventies. Um, I was out this weekend and while I was out, I heard three di- three different languages while I was out. What are we telling our children that are different by not accommodating them for their needs? I think it's very important that we look at that issue and try to make changes for them. As we've said before, the children are future. And if we're not preparing them for the future, then what are we doing?
Thank you. Other questions from the audience? Anybody writing anything down?
Tim, can I say something?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Arnold.
Like the people, in the school board meetings, I mean, what, Monica brings up a good point about not seeing, I didn't see you. I didn't, I lost you meeting, but we're sure. In defense of the school board, I mean, anyway, you come to a meeting, we generally have an executive session where nobody's allowed there. Then we have a work session where anybody who comes to a work session, a turd, can't talk and they come out of the turd. So if you come to the work session or come to a meeting ahead of time and not sure you're going to be there, during our break, we would probably, probably have time for conversation. But oftentimes, we finish one session at two minutes to six and they return right around. And it's present, I have to wrap the meeting up because it's on TV, we have to be in order. So, you know, just reach out a little bit to us and let us know you want to talk to us after the meeting, before the meeting or whatever. Because I don't want anybody coming in and being a few of you slanting. Again, I'm going to have your vote, I'm going to be respectful to you and I'm going to be set the few, well, I want to make sure that I'm not being a few.
Thank you. Um, and yes, Mary.
Um, hi, this question is for everyone. Um, I've been in education for over twenty years, seventeen was in La Porte. My question deals with equity. The majority of our families in La Porte are no longer two-parent, mom stays at home to raise the family. More and more grandparents are raising their grandchildren for various reasons. Being that these grandparents are one to two generations apart from their grandchild, how do each of you propose to close that gap between the grandparents and their grandchild's teacher, their principal and admin? Um, especially on the realm of technology, if your two generations are moved, your grandkids are bringing these things home and you have, both often, no clue how to monitor it or how to help them with their homework. And also money, you know, to the grandparents that are raising their grandchildren are already retired, most of them on a fixed income. And when it comes to equity and our teachers ask for money for projects, et cetera, these grandparents don't have money to give, like possibly two-parent home. And, um, what would you propose that would make the grandparents feel valued? Um, studies are showing in the board, um, and studies I've done myself, the grandparent doesn't feel valued, um, when they go to talk to the teacher or to the principal because of their age.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. King, we're going to start with you.
So I, I, I think first and foremost, it's important that parents and caregivers both, I mean, I agree with you, not just grandparents, uncles, aunts. I mean, it takes the ability really to, to raise children and, and we, I think that we need to remove any kind of, like, the word about, the word states it now, but, uh, like, I guess, uh, there's no prejudice when it comes to who is showing up for the, the child, as long as the child has someone there who cares. I mean, that's the most important thing. It doesn't matter if you're a parent or, or a grandparent. So you show that as long as there's someone in their life that cares and gives them the time. Um, to, to help bridge that gap and I think we are already working on it, but I think mentorship programs are another option that our school, schools can take more advantage of. I think having, um, even if they don't have it, they can bring one life if they have a mentor who really cares and just take that time to learn about them and help them find a path for themselves. I think that's another, if the study showed, that's another option for children to, to, to see more success. Um, and I said previously, parts of the board are, are, are well below the poverty line and it, it, it's hard for us to respect people that are, you know, just running it, trying to get some, to, to be able to donate any of that, that spare to their students. But, uh, where possible, I would like to mostly lean on community organizations to help us find programs that can help those people out.
Mr. Arnold.
I'm not sure I can answer any question. He asked, how we close the gap between the grandparents and the financial?
Well, um, I, I could not mention that. Kids that are being raised by their grandparents for various reasons are usually already had experience trauma. So those kids learn differently. So they come into the school already different, having been through trauma taking place with their grandparent. And sometimes the teachers don't know how to teach that kind of student or the, or the admin, the higher-ups don't understand that that child doesn't need to talk differently. And the grandparents are usually one to two generations older and they sometimes feel that they're not taken seriously because they're seen as old and already moved.
Well, I like to say is, there's a, there's a number of agencies that may be contacted if there's a situation like that. And you may not like this answer, but it's not the school board's, it's not the school board's responsibility. That's the bring of my attention, my, my job is to refer you to the proper agency, not, not to, you know, handle it. That's why we have counselors and so forth. We specialize in training. We have a number of agencies, you know, for having child advocates in La Porte. Some people like that who will give them that, you know, and, uh, so I, I think, I fully understand what you're saying, but, uh, I have to, just be honest with you. It's not the school board's responsibility. Refer you as you come and ask me and help you all again, yes, but it's not the school board's responsibility.
Then let me, um, throw it back to you. Whose responsibility is it to train the teachers or the principals or the admin to understand that they, that there is a difference?
Well, what, what do you?
Then, then coming from a two-parent home.
I'm not, I'm going to be hearing everything you're saying. I'm going to answer to you.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
You know, all I say is if you come to me, I know who to send you to, I can refer no more the parent or the grandparent or the kid and, and the child itself and be, uh, be addressed. But, uh, fully supportive of that, absolutely, you know. And what you're bringing up now, I've heard a number of those cases that, where the grandchild, grandparents are raising the child, you know, have the money and so forth, the money and financial difficulties. And fully, you know, conscious of that and very receptive, sorry, but that's happening, we can free you.
Okay, Ms. Bailey.
I think that what I would advise would be to, um,
I think that what I would advise would be to um maybe seek out assistance and just go into the school and having a meeting and discussing it, cause maybe they can provide some extra assistance for you that is not just readily readily available. Um, it it's definitely a tough situation, as um Mr. King stated, it takes a village and my mother was fortunate enough to have a village. It def- it's hard, my mother was a single parent and without the village, you need a village. If it's a mentorship program, something to stand in the gap for the stuff that is missing, you might wanna reach out to that, a Boys and Girls Club, some other associations that may be able to help.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I I agree um also um that I think there's layers and so I I don't want the school board to um overstep an area that should really be what the teacher's doing or maybe the faculty, I know there's par professionals in the school system that deal directly with kids that go to the classroom to help them. And so I don't wanna come in and, you know, um, do anything that would um disrupt that, which is already in place. What I would say is, if there's something specific, like you had mentioned with technology, and I know, you know, I'm getting older and I didn't grow up with it, thankfully I have young kids that can help me with that, but maybe, you know, we can put something into place where we have the high schoolers volunteer time at the elementary school, grandparents can come in with their phones or sit on the computer with the high schooler who can do this in three seconds flat, something like that. But I I would be cautious to say anything definitive because I don't think that's the school board um is something that we're gonna do directly. I think it's something that we're going to encourage the teachers to do, the faculty, the professionals, the counselors that are there that know the students and know the grandparents.
Mr. Gillen?
You mentioned you've been in education here in La Porte for seventeen, well, thank you very much for your service to La Porte and the school corporation. Um, I I agree with what was said here, that I'm not sure that the director, the school board would have a direct connection to that, however, I would tell you the challenge is identifying those kids that need the help. Kids are, kids are proud, the students are proud and they don't always wanna step forward and say they're having problems and trust me, I can relate to the technology problems, I'm a grandfather, so I can relate to those technology problems, but I can share with you, when Tucker was a football player for La Porte High School, he didn't have a a pair of cleats, he probably wouldn't have come to us and told us that, but we would have discovered that, we would have found a pair of cleats worn. And I think our teachers and our educators and our administrators, if they can identify those challenges, there are people that will help with it, it's just identifying those students that are struggling because maybe they are being raised by grandparents that we don't, we don't know about. But as a board, I think we've gotta defer that out to the, to the grassroots, I guess, for the building model.
Okay, thank you. One more quick question. Indiana um has passed the new law of the IRE in regard to IRE and retention after in third grade, if after they take a couple ties with summer school, et cetera, they are going to be retained. Any opinion on that at all from anyone?
Uh, do you want everyone to answer that?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Arbour, we'll start with you.
Well, I don't, again, I I read the question, I don't have time to quote the name of that. What was the answer?
Go ahead. Well, um, the state has passed that the IRE, second graders are going to start taking IRE and in third grade, if they fail in second grade, they will take it in third grade. If they fail in a third grade, there's interventions, there's summer school, et cetera. If they fail again, they are to be retained in third grade. So, independent, if anyone has one about that.
Well, that that's, that's the key, came out in the state board of education, that's the key from them, so that's where all the, all the knowledge is coming from down there, supposedly, you know. I just said, and I'd have to leave those people that made those decisions, those people, teachers like yourself that did the deal with that, you're more knowledgeable than I am, you know, but we see that about maintaining kids. Back when I was in school, back, you know, when I walked fight by the school, I threw a weight, you know, back when I was in school, you know, maintaining or or flight, you can call it, flight was just, you know, kind of an accepted practice. Not like it today, we're moving kids along and don't, aren't functioning, they're, you know, not, they're not getting the skill they needed and unfortunate, look what we're putting out in some of these schools, unfortunately doing that, so there has to be some kind of measures taken to make sure that you can get proper education. What it is, I don't know, maybe it's vocational training, and I'm bigger on vocational training, maybe, so.
Ms. Bailey?
I would um have to um say that I'm not familiar with the law, so I will not comment on that.
Thanks.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I I would um say again, obviously, if it's something mandated by the state, then we're going to have to implement that, whether or not it's the best thing to do, I'm not sure. Um, you know, my kids really love reading, but they kinda went through skirts of it, so, and that's a kind of young um grade level to be doing that, so um I would be very cautious of it. And again, earlier I had said, you know, testing doesn't always show what's um a child is learning or where they're at and they could end up having a spurt where all of a sudden they get math or they get reading or they accelerate the whole grade level. Um, so, you know, we have to look at, is the testing really effective and is it really gonna show what we need to, you know, see in that student?
Mr. Gillen?
I too am not familiar with that law, but I would suggest to you, if that's the law and that's what we're being told we have to do, that that's what we're gonna have to do then, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. Uh, I do like the idea of some sort of level of mastery before we move students on, but again, if that's gonna be what we're told we have to do, then that's what we're gonna have to do.
Mr. King?
Uh, I also, I don't get to read the law, but I, we'll take a chance to take a look at it now. Um, and even when I was in school, it was something that we we practiced, I mean, there was kids who were held back and oftentimes it was not always necessarily school-related, but also just how they, if they were matured up to the point or not, and I think, I hope there's a degree of discipline for retaining here and and it seems that that a lot of them become more confident in themselves and and so there's positive, I think, to become in any kind of position um into the law rather than all of it, but um, I don't have no more.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, we have time for one more question before we have our closing comments. And I think we have someone coming up right now.
I'd say that prior to my question, that's okay. I um just wanna say diversity and inclusion and equity and competition is way more than race and sexuality. When we talk about gender gaps, that's about diversity and inclusion. And I think it is the school board's responsibility to make sure that the administrators from the administration all the way to the janitor, to the school bus driver are well versed in diversity and inclusion. The school bus drivers are the first person that child sees when they go to school in the morning. They should be greeted with a smile and embraced and if you are not well versed in diversity and inclusion, then you may as well ruin their whole day by the way that you intercepted that child first thing in the morning. So I just wanna say that. My question is, I graduated in nineteen ninety-two and back in nineteen ninety-two, La Porte High School was a powerhouse in the Doolin Conference in athletics. I'm noticing a decline in our athletics and I'm wondering, and I'm not here to um, I don't wanna say anything negative about our coaches, I appreciate each and every coach that comes out to work with our children, however, I wonder if anyone has any ideas of how to rebuild our programs and to get our skill sets back up so that La Porte can become a powerhouse in the Doolin Conference again.
Okay, um, who does start up? Mr. Arbour, are you, I think it's you.
I think it's Mr. King.
No, Mr. King started last time, I think, I I think it's you. Mr. Arbour, I think it's you.
Well, I fully understand where you're coming from and ironically, I had this lengthy discussion today, I had it last weekend, I had it two weeks ago, and uh, I'd like to include you, but scooty include you, about the sports program. And you're right on, uh, you're the one that we need to look at. Number one is, uh, since you graduated, we have a couple of schools in our DAC that are community schools that are drawing, they're drawing players all over. And I'm surprised because the voucher program and choose school choice didn't come up today because I live in our state, that's just one of the things we were worried about, when they pass this, these high schools are gonna start doing the same thing colleges do, going out and recruiting people to come to their school to play athletics. And I think we're getting, we're seeing results on that today. Some of the schools that are in our conference are twice as large as La Porte, twice as large, and they're drawing from all over. La Porte isn't doing that, you know. Now, what do we do? I think our coaches are are good, our coaches are well-meaning people, they're very well-trained, they're knowledgeable about the sport they're training, you know, and they're just that getting the kids up. Why? I have my brothers, you know, one probably technology, they, kids are too worried about driving their car and too wrapped up in their social media and so forth, you worry about that, you know. Back when we were in school, it was a problem set in plan for you, that was something you died for, was to make the athletic team. Nowadays, it's not ten percent like it was in La Porte, it was, except several school west of Florida, they're doing their recruiting and so forth. So, I think that it's a convenient, you can look a hard look at that in the program, you may have to take a hard look at the conferences, I mean, we have our conferences, you're back playing school of our caliber instead of playing people over our heads, so I think that would be fine.
Okay. Let's try to keep it through, if we can, Ms. Bailey?
I I think that we have to not only look at what has happened to our athletic departments, but also take a look at why are our students leaving our school district and ask the question, what are the weaknesses there and where do we need to strengthen our school system to build back up again?
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
I think that um coaches and faculty are um all, you know, good things to um have a depth of and um, you know, a good knowledge of and not just putting somebody into that position because it's open and we need somebody there. I'd be curious um why you want to get back to that, you call it a powerhouse kind of status, what what about that um you found intriguing or um good for our community? I, yeah, I kind of agree, I've seen a lot of the kids just automatically go to their phones and so I don't know that sports is as valued and I think so there might be um kids who might have a little talent for it, who are just not going out for the sport for various reasons. So I don't have a lot to say about, you know, how we could get back to that, but I definitely think that we always need to um try to recruit the best, um both the student athletes and have a high expectation of them as students as well as athletes and um a pride for the school and a um, you know, a um cheering for those um athletes in all the various sports and not just the popular ones, as well as the coaching staff and the parents who are volunteering.
Mr. Gillen?
There is no way I can answer this question in one minute.
We're, we're pressed for time.
I've, I've got a lot, a lot of thoughts on this and I would certainly love to share those thoughts, but let me just share one statistic with you and I I certainly don't wanna to be critical of Mayor Gervady by all, by all means, but this is more of a, this is as much a community problem as it is a school problem. Let me give you an idea of what I'm talking about with the socioeconomic, we have eight schools in the Duma Athletic Conference, we keep it all sports standings for both female and male sports. There's a direct correlation between free and reduced lunch rates and where those teams or where those schools finishing on those all sports standings. You're gonna have Lake Central, Crown Point, Chester and Valpo are gonna be in the top half. Every year, they're gonna be in the top half of male and female sports. The bottom half will have La Porte, about fifth, maybe sometimes sixth, and then you'll have Porte, Michigan City and Mariville. The four schools at the bottom are also the same four that have the highest free and reduced lunch rates and the ones at the top are the lowest free and reduced lunch rates. There's a direct correlation between socioeconomic and the success of athletic programs, your performing arts, your academics, there's a lot more to it than just, and 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 we've seen a change in in our, our, our community in some of those things. Do I think we're gonna rebound? I certainly do. I think this community is headed in the right direction. I gotta make up to Mayor Gervady just a little bit now, I slammed a little bit, but no, I think we're headed in the right direction, but this is a bigger problem than just the school corporation. We've got to attract people in our community and provide opportunities. You go to Valpo, you go to Crown Point, look at their facilities and compare to ours, their kids have better opportunities than what our kids have got right now. So how do we fix that? I don't have those answers right now. Um, I would tell you one of my biggest, I told you I didn't have enough time, one of the biggest concerns I've got is the the influence of youth sports. I think that is harder for high school coaches and high schools to deal with that name, image, likeness and and the porter. What is going on at youth levels before they even get to the high school is maybe why our numbers are dropping down. You know, they have a bad experience as a taxpayer in baseball. We've got a grandson that fits into that, that role, he had a bad experience in baseball with the summer, he may not go out for baseball again. So what is going on before they even get to us is having an impact. But I'm, like I said, I just don't have enough time to answer that. Give me five minutes, sorry.
Mr. King?
So, you know, as as the the last team to go to state for the ball, um, just a little shout out, yeah.
The only?
Yeah, one and only, I think, yes. Um, no, I, it's, I I stated it previously, we need to create a culture of success, we were with, like, we were a winner mentality, that's just the slicer, the slicer mentality, it was um, it was helpful and there was a community that was around it, I mean, you would go to a game, you would have the jostle or a seat, you'd have to fight people to stay in the spot you wanted to stay in. My, you know, I remember my aunt that always would stand right, right below the uh, the press box and that was our spot, you know, so it's important for us to, I hadn't, like I said, I don't know the, the direct answer, but it's important for us to to give back to having a community that's centered around our schools, they, I mean, we're, we're a small enough town, in a lot of these small towns, the only thing they have is school and, and I mean, we're lucky to have some, some other amenities, but our school is such a large part, it's the only shared institution that we all have, that that we all have in common and it's important for us to, to be successful because it did, it, sports are the heart and soul of the community and and it's something that gives us all pride and I mean, if you look at these DAC schools, they're, they're paying their coaches at least a hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, it might be a, the access to, to budget problem, but I mean, I think it's twofold and I, I think that it's important for us to devote more of our attention to it and and more of our budget to, to making sure that our, our support system is.
Okay, we're gonna take, uh, we have one more question from the audience and I'm only gonna give you thirty seconds. And then after that, uh, each candidate will have one question to make a summary. Uh, and this last question is, um, how can you as a school board get the students more involved with La Porte community? Ms. Carpenter?
I think maybe, um, and people have mentioned, um, funding, you know, when um, single parenting or grandparents can't afford it, maybe um, we can have a program where if students volunteer a certain number of hours, then, you know, we can um discount the cost for Chromebook rentals or, you know, if they're in athletics, we can do something for the uniforms, some, some of those costs can be offset by them volunteering in the community, um, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Gillen, thirty seconds.
Well, I think this is a great opportunity for athletic teams to reach out and and wear their jerseys and do things for the community, I, that's, obviously, we're observed more than anything else, but it could be any club or organization to go out and volunteer to do things. Um, that could also be part of, and we had this at one time, I think we kinda got away from it, it was a requirement of the coaches to find one community service project to do uh as part of their requirements for their jobs, so uh as part of their evaluation. So there's some things that we can encourage, but again, I don't know that that's the school board's responsibility other than to suggest that to the athletic director.
Okay, Mr. King?
As I stated previously, I think that partnerships with community organizations, the local governments and businesses are all important parts of, and those are things that we can champion as school work members. I, in my personal, well, I mean, I guess professional life, I, I am pushing for a student liaison with the Sustainability Commission for the city of La Porte, um, and also working on at the Tree Grant that we received for the, for the city of La Porte that has a that we received for the, for the City of La Porte that has a component that is a, the jobs program for children. And I think it's important for us, specifically for representation of children, et cetera. And it's important for us to, to create those bridges between the local government, the businesses, and, and the communities, organizations, so that students have, you know, job experience and placement here and, and become members of our community, contributing members of our community.
Mr. Arnold?
Well, I think that there are a number of organizations now, and, uh, I'm only a part of our county and the state. They're asking for school kids to get involved, or they're, serve on their committees, on their boards, and so forth, just for the knowledge they bring, they bring. So, I am encouraged that. Plus, we have so many, as I've delivered to, we have so many organizations in the, uh, schools that are volunteering and going out and doing great things, not getting enough publicity and notification or, by the media for going out and doing great things. And I think we have to continue to encourage them to, to stay on track, and encourage similar way to other people to get involved in social activities as well, in our classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
I think the encouragement first has to come from the parents. We have to encourage our children to be involved, and so many times, it's just easier to not have them involved, because for children to be involved, parents have to be involved. So, we first have to get our parents into the notion that being involved, an idle mind is wasteful, or an unidle mind, I can't remember the phrase, but I think we need to get our parents involved, and then in turn, our children also be involved.
Thank you. We're going to end this evening, uh, with a one-minute statement from each of our candidates as their summary, um, for their candidacy for the school board, and we will start with Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you. Uh, and again, thanks, Grant, for this opportunity tonight. Thank you for moderating this.
It was my pleasure.
Um, prior to being hired by the I H S A as the Associate Commissioner, I served on the board for two-plus term before I retired from my job as athletic director. The board for the I H S A is very similar to what the school board is here. We have three responsibilities. We hire the commissioner, we took care of policies and procedures, and we took care of finances. And that's what the role of the school board would be too, is we hire a superintendent, we, we look over the finances, and we approve policies and procedures. Uh, so I've been involved in that. The one big difference is we, we were in charge of a hundred and fifty thousand students when I was part of the I H S A board. Um, it's a big organization, but I look at this as being very parallel, and the decisions that we had to make and, and what we had to do there are very, very similar for student athletes, as, as it would be for just the students in the school. So, I've got experience in this. I've mentioned to you before, I'm blue, orange, and black, I love this community, I love the school corporation. I've got a lot invested in this, this, uh, organization, so I would like to give something back.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Uh, I think that it's important for people to remember that it takes young people taking, taking, uh, the reins on things sometimes. I'm not saying that we, we have it bad or anything, I'm saying that the future is in the hands of the art. And it's important for us to, to have young people take a step forward, and, and, you know, I, I, I appreciate all the time, but I'm trying to put it in practice here. I, I, I think that I have the drive and the spirit to, to do what it takes to make the right decisions, and I have the energy now, um, I, I have the motivation as well, I have a two-year-old daughter who will be a slicer, and I, I want to make sure these schools are a place that I want to send my daughter. And so, at the end of the day, you know, I, I, I talked about improving communication, providing I H S A's to education for all, and enhancing programs, but a, a, a big part of that is, you know, I want the board to be a place that I feel comfortable sending my daughter and any of my future children. If I start doing that now, I, I think having access to that would, would allow me to grow into a, a board member that can make a difference.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Arnold?
First of all, I thank Mr. Minor, and, yeah, thank you so much for this evening, and thank you people for sticking through and listening to us tonight. I'm a very proud member, senior member of the La Porte school board. I've served with some great people, I'm going to serve multiple, some great people in the United States first of the year. If I don't, the opportunity will present to me, and the honor that you've stolen, I am forever thankful for. Together, we can make a difference. We've had some successes, we've had some failures, but you know what? There's still some still going to come up in the east tomorrow and set in the west. We've got to learn to work through these things, and do it together. And we're not going to do it by criticism, by getting on social media, and whacking certain people and complaining and so forth. Before you do that, you need to, you need to, uh, learn the facts of what's going on. We have a great school system, it's going to be even greater. I'm surprised that the situation in luck tonight, I'm talking about vouchers from charter schools. I was ready for that one, and I'm here. But that remains, is stick with it. We have great administration, we have great teachers, we have great bus drivers, we have a great school board, and are all geared towards making this a better community, and making the best we can for our students. So, I'm going to thank you very much, and thank the, uh, community for everything you've done for Jamal and Sam.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
My goal is to support a strong collaborative education environment that ensures every student has the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. I believe in fostering transparent communication between the board, parents, teachers, E P S professionals, and the community, while prioritizing the safety, well-being, and academic growth of our students. I will contribute to making the school the best that they can be for everyone. I'm asking you tonight to vote for me, Monica Bailey.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I echo everyone's gratitude for this forum, and for you coming out and for asking the questions, and getting to hear a little bit about the concerns of the commanding. I think, you know, our school systems are the foundation of, you know, what the community's going to be in the future, um, what we're putting out, um, what we are teaching our kids, what we are valuing. And, um, I look forward to being a part of that. If you vote for me, I will work hard to ensure that the schools continue to raise those standards and to lay that foundation to strengthen our commanding in the future.
Thank you. Well, finally, I would like to say thank you to all of you who came out tonight. Um, and I learned a lot tonight myself, so, uh, being a transplant, uh, here to, to the La Porte area. And I, I feel very fortunate to be of five individuals who care so much about this community and about this school system, uh, that we're going to have really good representation. So, thank you five so much for being here tonight. Okay.
I echo thank you. Just to remind you, be aware that sometime next week, we will have access to this broadcast, this video, and therefore you can send that information to whomever you feel would like to also be informed as a voter. Um, just remember, there are only three slots, and we have five excellent candidates here. So, this has given you and myself a lot of food for thought. I'm, I'm just thrilled that we have this kind of level of candidates. So, thank you so much, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. And I'm so proud of you, Patala Porte. I'm, I'm sorry, you're saying, is it, where is it going to be available? Uh, hometown news, uh, now, is a Facebook place, it also is a website. Uh, and I will make sure I find the access as much of the social media as I can to give a link for how that would be able to be accessed, and I will give a heads up to Stan Maddox to help us get that news out as well. But give it about five to seven days to get all the editing done. We have enough time, uh, for voting to get good information out. Thank you.